Please join in the pledge allegiance. The pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it's already November 9th. And today, the commissioners went up to courthouse to review our new digs that we're gonna have our commission. It's probably gonna take about ninety days to get it ready when it's down with the old assessor's offices. That's one thing we accomplished today. Any public comment on the non-adjutant?
I wanted to take a moment to discuss the airport expansion with you all. I've gone to the city commission, so this is probably obvious to you, but I contacted, I live in the Shannon Township. I contacted our trustee, Mr. Mau, and he informed me that this isn't really in his scope. So I thought I'd bring it to you all. Just, I don't really feel like the county residents have got a voice as far as what's going to be impacting us. And just looking for who benefits, it just seems like it's really the airport itself. And just looking, I looked through the economic impact study and they had a slightly different number than the city of Atchison for the Cape 59 airport page where the impact study said that it brings in an average of annually 1,257 general aviation visitors who spend an average of $25 a visit in town. The cities had double that. I just don't know if, I mean, half of what was estimated to come in makes that big of a difference as far as what's gonna happen to all of us with our property depreciating value with the expansion. The runway is gonna be along 290th Road or 286th. Right now, we experience a pretty big amount of airport noise, which we've just generally kind of taken. That's part of living out there, but with this, it just feels like we haven't really gotten a say this time around through grant money. It seems like they're just gonna go ahead with it. And it's troubling to me because it doesn't seem like it's solving any of the issues that they cited. Crosswinds will still be a problem, which is what was cited for me is why they have to go so far or so low to our homes, crab walking, I think is the term they use. So that's not gonna improve for us. And as far as like things that could help us, I don't think there's anything we could do to stand in the way at this point. But as far as just helping the county residents to feel like they're heard, that's a pretty big part of the FAA grants and assurance documentation is that it's very important to have the community on the side of the airport and felt heard. I feel like there could be a lot with if we could help, like the city could help maintain 286 roads. Kind of in a little bit of a bad spot. We don't have it aligned, it's a little bit rough on the shoulders. We get a fair amount of garbage scattered from people going up to the dump. If anybody could help us maybe with rainbow, I thought, you know, kind of with rainbow internet. One of the things they said was 286 Road residents would be able to get on it. But come to find out, it's only the other way in the line they buried going down our homes. For some reason, they can't say why they can't get us on it, but they said it's, they just can't. So we still have to have the amount of residents show interest to get on the line that's out in our yards. And it just kind of seems like turn after turn where you're just kind of the bottom tier of who's being, you know, any benefit. It just kind of seems like it's downside after downside. So I just wanna take the time to raise it to you all just to say it's, you know, an annual contribution of $25 from 150 people worth what you're gonna do to all of us on 286 Road without really, I said, any weight for us to at least be a voice. And I wanted to say just because it's public record that if anybody's interested, it's not, you don't have to be a city resident, but on December 31st, several positions on the airport advisory board will be opening. And the county clerk said that, or excuse me, the city clerk said that they'll list those positions on the care website. So if any of us feel like we have the time, obviously, the meetings are the second Monday at 10:00 a.m., which a lot of these kind of meetings are harder for people with four, nine to five jobs to get to. But if anybody else has the time or would be interested, that might be a way we could, the county could be heard a little bit more, especially the township residents, because I don't really feel like we have that representation above us until we get to the county. Thank you.
Are you Mrs. McDonald's?
No, that's me.
Okay, I'm Casey Quinn, and you had messaged me. And I actually did bring your concern to this morning, to the workshop, because I honestly, I didn't know what we could do, if we could help. And I think what I learned this morning, which I was going to send you a message back, was it's basically property from the city of Atchison, so we don't really interfere or we don't have the authority to-
Jurisdiction.
To help. Now, I did write down the rainbow internet because we are looking at, you know, infrastructure grants and different things where we're gonna expand some broadband areas. So that's one thing that I feel like, you know, I'm just trying to see where we could fit in to help you.
Well, it's more a concern than looking at if the airport, what bounds they can extend into our county lives as far as the airport runs 24/7. And a big part of the county life is, they like their fireworks. We all have a lot of fireworks out there. If they change the direction of the runway, will that impact how people are able to celebrate the Fourth of July, the Amelia Fest? Is there gonna be something that'll have to be? Well, we can't have you shooting those off because the planes will be descending in that area. It seems like they have a pretty good unilateral annexation. You can take up to 25 acres just to unify the bounds of a district. So it doesn't seem like there's a lot stopping them if they wanted to keep coming through and expanding the airport that way. That's my fear is that they already have a foothold and it seems very easy for them to. At this point, we're so disregarded and we don't have a voice, then it just seems like a slippery slope. So we, you know, we have an airport in our backyard. We don't have really any other things to boost the property value. We have satellite internet and airports, you know, with airplanes buzzing our house pretty consistently June through September.
Yeah, Casey had roundabout sent your email to me since you're in my district. And another couple topics you had brought up is 286 Road. So that's something that we mention, I think, every day that we're in our meetings is 286 and how we're gonna try to get on that and work on that. So how we fund that and everything is forefront of what we're trying to do. And also the trash, I know that through signage and stuff, we try to encourage people to tarp their roads since the landfill is on that road to your east. So if there is a major spillage or something, let landfill know and we'll try to get somebody out there to pick it up. The only thing I know about the actual airport is the first time I ran was, the big topic at that time was annexation or what's the term? Eminent domain, which was very popular in that area. Since then, you've purchased the land or it's been purchased for the airport. And we really don't have a jurisdiction to supersede that it's city property. So if somebody knows an avenue or whatever, let us know. But I mean, I think the city would be the next stop. I mean, I'm not trying to put you off, but I just don't know of any avenue at this point that we can help you on that one.
The airport is in the city of Atchison. The land that they purchased is not. It's in the county of Atchison. So I don't know where that falls land use, but I think they're probably within three miles zoning of Atchison. But that, the land that they purchased would still be inside the city of Atchison. Well, the airport's inside the county of Atchison too. It's not within the city limits.
I feel like, as far as, I mean, I don't really have a very strong understanding. I'm trying to catch up on all this, but if you guys surround the city airport, can you do anything as far as zoning to help make sure things, I said, it just, it just seems like it's a pretty powerful, it just seems like MGP is really kind of the only one that really benefits from this. I know Karen Seaver was the one who purchased the land from the Eskies and the Holtons. I'm sorry if I said their name wrong, I'm sorry. My hope that keeps track of me with that. But they had mentioned eminent domain as a fear and felt fair market value was a win. And I worry that's gonna be the predicament that faces a lot of us with now our property, like 10% estimated depreciation with the airport expansion. I mean, like I said, I don't know what you can do, but just a county resident, it just seems like we have a barrel of losses and not a lot of wind out of this experience.
Has the FAA had a impact meeting with citizens, your public meeting?
We were told this city had a meeting in November of last year, but I looked at the minutes. I didn't see any actual minute notes that that was something that was brought forward. I don't know if it was just left for legal-
I'm just one of the FAA's required to have a meeting on economic impact.
It was supposed to be, I think you're supposed to meet with the community, but honestly, a lot of the stuff as far as noise impact, it's a lot voluntarily, though, if they opt in or not.
I feel, I feel for you. And anything we can do as a county government, we'd be more than happy to assist. But I think it is a city of Atchison situation. In an FAA situation.
I did bring it up at the city committee, but I just thought I'd bring it here as well because we are county and not the city. So we're kind of a little bit in a weird spot.
I'll keep my ears open for any avenue.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Move to the next item. Commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioner Quinn.
Last Wednesday, I had a coffee meeting at Senior Village and just wanna give kudos to our new administrator, Julie Martinez, and our new D O N, Anna, and our A D O N, Stephanie. The facility is running very smooth. There was a good meeting, a lot of good communication. And our residents got to go to the Halloween parade, which was exciting to get them out and back kind of feeling normal again. So I got to see many pictures of them smiling at the Halloween parade, so that was neat. And then we had another follow-up Senior Village meeting with a new, and the department heads on Friday just to kind of work through some of the works, I guess, like startup. And so we are headed in a really good direction and I'm feeling good about the residents' care at Senior Village and our leadership.
Commissioner Noel.
Yeah, and they're gonna be free to take new residents too. So that is a good development. That's really, I don't have anything else to add to that, so.
New business before the board. The first thing we have is the campus of the 2020 General City School Election. The Board of Canvassers are Commissioner Casey Quinn, Commissioner Eric Knoll, and Commissioner Jack Bauer. I call the Canvas Board. I open the Canvas Board. Michelle, do you wanna lead the meeting?
Yes, I basically have a summary page here that I've given to all of you. I do have a couple extra. We have had a almost an 18% turnout, 17.9. We have 2,108 voters for the city and school election. We do have 20 total provisionals. And those provisionals are basically question ballots where like a name may not be the same or an address is different, somebody who doesn't have valid ID or not registered in Atchison County. So I do have a few of those that I have went through and Mr. Henderson glanced through them as well. So I do have these to present to you today with recommendations by statute as to whether or not they should be counted. So I don't know if you guys just want to do like, there's only like five classifications. So, which are basically written in below on the summary. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No. I will say really more for clarification than anything that the court's office and the, has done a really good job of reducing the number of provisional ballots and maybe the complexity. Some of, some of these that we had in the past were like law school exam questions about voting. Those have really been managed, and these are down in basically three categories, I think. And they're, I think, fairly cut and dried as far as the law's concerned.
Thank you. We do, in our office, we do everything we can to try to cure a provisional, which is in the case with one of them that we do have. I'm gonna kind of start off basically at the top of the list. I am showing we have 12 that are change of address. The voters have moved, they've moved within county. They voted the correct ballot because they went to their precinct, the new precinct, and got the correct ballot. So they had to do a provisional, basically moving within county, voted the correct ballot per KSA 25-231, or 2316B, change of address, move within the county and voted the correct ballot. Recommendation to count is yes.
Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the ballots as presented. Move by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noel. Any further discussion? All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Close call, vote, answer, accept.
I have one provisional here that they, they did not have their driver's license on them when they voted. We do not turn anybody down at the polling locations. We allow everyone to vote. Hence why we have the challenge votes. So this one here did not have driver's license on them. However, they did show office staff their driver's license. It was a valid driver's license. So KSA 25-2908D does recommend this ballot to count since a valid driver's license was shown.
It was just shown later.
It was shown later. They have in Tokyo this to show their valid license. Or it's not necessarily a driver's license, passport, just a valid ID.
Chair, we entertain a motion to accept voter did not show valid ID or one ballot.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Commissioner Noel, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
That one ballot is counted.
I also have three ballots here. Two of them are returned by mail, postmarked on election day, received prior to the Friday. The third ballot was one that when our, when our election workers bring the bags back in, this is one of the items that they're supposed to hand to the clerk when they, when they sign in, is any ballot that was mailed out delivered to any of the polling locations, which is something that they've just changed within the last probably three years to where if you have a mail ballot, you can drop it off at any location on election day prior to seven o'clock. So that was the case with this third one. It was in the bag, delivered prior to the deadline. So I do have three of them here. Per Kansas statute, KSA 25-106 and 251132 basically is any advance ballots. As long as they're postmarked prior to, or election day or prior and given to us by Friday through the mail system and/or dropped off at any of the polling locations, the recommendation would be to count those.
Chair, we entertain a motion to allow the registered voter return ballots. Move by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Noel. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, three ballots are accepted.
And it looks like there's gonna be a total of four here that I have left. I do have two that did not have ID on their person to show when they voted. These were, we tried to cure these. We actually made a couple phone calls and we actually went to the resident's home on the second one. We went to their home twice and we could not get anybody to come to the door. So we attempted with all measures that we had and our capability to cure these two to where we could count these ballots. But since there was no valid form shown prior to the canvas, per the KSA 25-2908D, the recommendation would be not to count these since they were not, they were not visible.
Chair, we entertain a motion not to count non-registered voters. Move by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noel. All in favor, seconded by saying aye. Two ballots did not count.
These here, I have two, the two remaining ballots. Basically, I have two voters who were not previously registered in Atchison County. They were registered, I have one that was registered out of state and the other one, I'm not sure where she was registered, where they were registered. But they were not registered in Atchison County. And that's one of the qualifications in order to vote in Atchison County is to, to have the voter registration on file. So per KSA 25-215, as qualifications of the voters at any election, basically this recommendation to count is no, since they were not.
Chair, we entertain a motion to reject these two ballots.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
I do wanna let you guys know that voter registrations have been placed on file for all of these people. So therefore, these people are gonna be registered for the next election. The addresses are gonna be fixed because we have those current voter registration files, so.
Do we need to count these ballots?
Yes, we're gonna have to hand count these ballots because we don't have the machines or anything and there's only 20 of them. I don't think it's gonna, there's 16, I guess.
We'll go into recess while you look at those ballots.
Chairman, do you care if I save one thing before we go into recess? It's just top of mind when we're talking about ballots that I know the public is always anxious to know the outcome of an election. And one of the things that I learned, being able to help behind the scenes this year, is how many people, even though it might be funny to you to put Mickey Mouse or Donald Trump or anybody but so-and-so on the ballots, like it just prolongs the process on their end because they are checking everything. I mean, you have to separate any right and it's, even if it's goofy, you know, it has to be separated and it just prolongs the process. So I just think people might not understand that and they think, you know, oh, I'll write it in because it's funny, but it actually prolongs the process. So just wanted to explain that.
Does every, every vote does count, even if it's-
Even if it's Mickey Mouse.
Even if it's-
And if Mickey Mouse, there has been cases where Mickey Mouse has won elections, doesn't show up, of course, by the second Monday in January to take that over. Therefore, it's treated as a legacy.
Okay, so we're gonna go to recess when we count these ballots. About ten minutes or fifteen minutes?
I don't know if you need to stay in time for it.
I just go to recess.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Mr. Henderson, myself, and Haley are gonna run off into West's office and get these done. Since we have to do it manually, it shouldn't take that much longer.
Okay, we're back from recess and the ballots have been entered and there was no change in the election. So I declare the Canvas Board meeting closed.
I do have, yes, I do have a copy of the results here and I would like to have the board of canvassers signature. And I do, we went ahead and printed a couple of extra copies for any, for any who have one thing.
Is there like a press release for Mary or something, anything like that? How will that be?
Joe Snyder, you're, I'm here with purchase order for a new 2022 John Deere G72G motor grader with the Murphy tractor. The amount was $342,394.54 minus the trade allowance of a 2008 Volvo G940 motor grader, $35,000, which makes the total purchase price $307,394.54.
And we're planning a lease purchasing.
We are lease purchasing, yes.
Has that already been done?
It's, the money and everything is taken care of. We already went through that.
So the chair, we entertain a motion to approve the purchase order of Murphy tractor, $307,000. You can see all these digits, $394.54.
Also move.
It's the move by Commissioner Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Anything else, Joe?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna have a discussion with Justin about countywide sales tax. Are you people here to speak on about the sales tax or just listen? Okay, so we're gonna have a conversation here. Then if you have any comments after we're done, you're more than welcome to make comments. Okay, so I don't wanna start this. Justin, you wanna start it?
Yeah, sure. So it's come to the attention of the city of Atchison that there's a bill that's going to be floated through the legislature this year, believe it be SB 87. That would do a couple of things. The first thing it would do is allow county commissions in the future to decide whether or not a sales tax question would be subject to the apportionment formula or whether it would be dedicated. Currently, that's an authority that is reserved for the state legislature. So SB 87 would make that change. As our understanding, then SB 87 would also sunset the Atchison County countywide sales tax that is currently subject to that apportionment formula. So I'm here to, to figure out if the county plans to support SB 87 in the legislature and if so, what would be the potential ramifications or the plan to replace that revenue from your organization's perspective should that happen to pass and be signed into law.
I might make a comment. I think I got several comments here. Bear with me. In 1993, within the county of Atchison, our voters approved a general retail use sales tax to fund two services, solid waste and joint communications. This passed by a margin of 80% for, 20% against. This vote, this is a vote that could support, should support the sovereign right of voters of Atchison County. However, after a few years later, few years later, when this tax was working as presented, the city of Atchison created a way to control the monies coming from the tax by removing the ordinance that was originally agreed upon. In seeing this, other municipalities in Atchison County followed suit, except for one city, the county, the city of Lancaster, who was honoring the original vote of the county voters and how this vote should be administered in returning it back to the county. With this change, the city of Atchison initiated a tipping fee to be assessed when using county landfill and to where this was not a tipping fee applied to the service prior. The purpose of the tipping fee for the city of Atchison is to provide their share of the sales tax back to the county. It would appear that the city of Atchison is holding the county hostage and/or running the county, running the county, not the elected county commissioners. This tipping fee and sales tax is a unilateral action by the city of Atchison and not ever approved by both parties and no written agreement exists. Again, if you consider the 1993 ballot question, this is taxation without representation. I can't imagine any business or individual taxpayer wanting to pay additional fees, charges for services outside the sales tax question or why a city within a county should ever be able to unilaterally get, get, get to keep the additional income, which is about $640,000, when I calculated it. They would, they should be visiting with businesses and individual taxpayers, but they haven't. And how would they, when no one wants to pay more for something outside of what the taxes already pay? Senate Bill 87, which is in the, is not floating around the legislature. It's in the Senate under the control of the Senate President, Ty Matheson. It tries to control the idea that money should be distributed by the intent of the voter. Senate bill also calls for a sunset of this 1993 tax in July of 2024. This would be the opportunity for us to have a dedicated sales tax voted on by the city, the citizens of Atchison County, the sovereign voters to approve this, this sales tax. I support 100% the Senate Bill 87 and its intent to distribute the money according to the intent of the voters of Atchison County.
You're under the impression that the city of Atchison is levying a tipping fee at the county transfer station?
I'm just, this is where it came from, Justin. And it's a unilateral, there's no agreement written down between the parties.
Who runs the transfer station?
Well, I hope it's the county, but I don't think that's actually been the case.
City has absolutely zero authority over your transfer station. If you wanna eliminate the tipping fee, you can do so. If you wanna charge twice as much, you can do so.
The original intent of the sovereign voter of Atchison County.
Yeah, was the, so several things have happened over that time. In the mid 90s, would you say that Atchison County was using those funds exclusively for solid waste?
I have not that, I don't know.
You know the answer's no.
No, I don't know that information, Justin.
Eric, you know the answer's no.
There was problems back then. But that's 2093, '03, '13. It was gonna be 30 years ago.
We can skip some of the, I actually am totally fine. Like, this doesn't hurt the city of Atchison at all. We can skip some of the, I actually uh, am totally fine. Like, this doesn't hurt the city of Atchison at all if you want to sunset the sales tax. Like, the city of Atchison, uh, now, I feel bad for other, there's been a negotiated truce between cities and counties throughout the entire state via the apportionment formula for going on forty years. I feel terrible for what this is gonna do to other cities and other places, uh. But in Atchison, where two-thirds of the population is inside the city of Atchison, my concern is that you're taking a big risk uh, and that you think you can just replace the revenue, and I don't see a path for the county to replace this revenue. I, I think you can elect to have a dedicated sales tax and have the city of Atchison go along with that. USD three seventy-seven can't pass a bond issue, like regardless of what, what they try to do. Like, there's already an aversion to new sales taxes. You combine that with the city of Atchison, you know, only opposing any sort of dedicated tax. I don't think you have a path to replace the revenue.
It's, it's, it's a dedic, it, it is a, the right of the sovereign voters to determine how they want it taxed.
Yeah, sure.
For these services.
Sure.
So.
If your intent is just to ask them, certainly you can do that. I guess what I'm saying is, what's the plan when that sales tax question fails?
Well, we, we got to twenty twenty-four to decide that, Justin.
I mean, in some ways, it, uh, there's certainly people on, uh, in my organization that, um, view this as a poison pill for city-county relations. In terms of, we've, we've tried to kind of brainstorm, what's the evergreen agreement here so that this discrepancy can be set aside and, and going forward? There's some sort of agreement or funding mechanism that actually, uh, is sort of politic-proof, personality-proof, uh, argument-proof, uh. I, I, I think that there's a, uh, a pretty fair, uh, arrangement that's in place. The problem is that the revenue keeps growing and becomes less and less possible, uh, for the voter intent argument to be met. There's too much money in the pool for voter intent to be met. We're open to reduction, which you all have the ability to, to do unilaterally. You can reduce this tax. We're certainly open to negotiation there.
Well, we can't do it unilaterally, it's negotiation. You said, you said, we could do it unilaterally.
The county commission could. I mean, you wouldn't need our permission. You can lower it to two-thirds or uh, three-quarters tomorrow, if you had a special meeting.
But if we done that, the, we're still subject to the apportionment. So if we decided to go to three-quarter or half, you could decide, well, we're still only gonna pay the same proportion we did before. So we're, you're, we're not gonna be able to collect the taxes because with the apportionment formula, it still goes to you first. And if you decide to pay last or pay less, we are set, I mean, there's, this is not a stable funding source because you could not pay anything and we can't do anything about it. It's going to you and you are arbitrarily making a figure that you now choose to fund this or not and we can't force or negotiate a, a settlement because the negotiations have been going on forever. I mean, if you want to go back to Commissioner Ross, he had a, uh, County Commissioner Ross, when, if anybody remembers that era, he had a solution to the problem and a proposal. It was shot down. And I know, um, Commissioner Madden had a proposal. It was shot down by the city. It was, I know my predecessor, Mike Bodenhausen, worked on this. Nothing came of it. I personally worked with the sales tax committee. And during that, there was, I mean, everything was on the table to be discussed. We talked about a dedicated sales tax. The city didn't want that. So we worked out another agreement and then when it went to time to be uh, put on paper for the new interlocal agreement, stipulations were put on by city administration that weren't even discussed in our eighteen months of negotiations. And so the, the ball keeps getting, or the goal, goal, goalposts keep getting moved as different, um, solutions or things have been negotiated. It's a little bit like, uh, Charlie Brown and Lucy and the Football. About the time that you get close to an agreement, things change. And since we've had the sales tax committee, now the city is saying they don't want anything to do with solid waste. Go do whatever you want with solid waste. I mean, they're not funding it, so we might as well run. That wasn't even brought up as anything to do as a proposal or any kind, wasn't discussed in just a couple of short years ago. So, uh, another thing that came out of the sales tax committee was Representative Epley was asked to attend. And he attended many of our meetings. He came forward with a three-quarter cent dedicated sales tax proposal. The city immediately shot that down and he was reamed pretty hard for having the audacity to come up with a plan that might, it was something that he done on his own. And it was shot down by the city. I, I want to re, uh, read a quote of his. This is from March sixth of twenty twenty, from Representative Epley. And in it, in it, it says, "It is well-known that this is one of those issues that just will not be resolved without a ballot initiative, a forced negotiation or discontinuance of this tax altogether." So I think that's a pretty powerful statement that even he, he being a impartial, um, person that was coming to our meetings and reading what was going on, I think that was pretty telling that he came up with that conclusion. Uh, we have negotiated and negotiated. Um, and one thing, another thing that I noticed, going back to all my papers and I see these proposals. The proposals to fix this have always originated from the county side. The city has never submitted anything as a fix for this problem. I, I've never seen, unless you want to call the current one, that looks like pretty much of a city proposal, but.
Does it?
Yes.
So you would have people believe that the city withholds all of our funding and we give an apportionment formula and we just keep it all. The current, the current, uh, agreement, that's just sort of a legacy agreement since twenty fourteen, started as us writing, voluntarily writing a four hundred and thirteen thousand dollar check, which has now grown with inflation to about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars every year. We operate under a resolution that perpetuates that agreement. That is a compromise agreement.
It's not an agreement. It was unilateral decision, what it said.
There was no input from the county.
There was nobody in the county who ever agreed to that.
There's no signature on that and that still leaves solid waste. That, that didn't even take, do the fifty percent of joint communications and solid waste is not being funded at all.
What was joint communications right in twenty fourteen? I can tell you it was eight hundred thousand dollars, so yeah, it was fifty percent of joint communications in twenty fourteen.
Well, it's not, it's not now. It's not funding.
No, it's not. And what we're proposing is to give you fifty percent of joint communications in perpetuity.
But nothing for solid waste. I mean, that's like, yippee, we're gonna get, we're gonna bring one side up to where it should be and then we're not doing anything for solid waste and we're supposed to call that a victory?
Who are your top three customers, uh, in tipping fee volume at the transfer station?
Who benefits most from having the tipping fee?
The tipping fee should be zero. That's what the, that's, this was a sovereign vote of the people to pay for solid waste. Joint communicate, let me finish. Joint communications. This is a service that city and county residents currently aren't receiving. They, they voted for a tax, it's being collected and they're not receiving it.
They're paying, it's a two-tiered system. Those that have to pay the tipping fee, anybody that has commingled trash, anybody that has their trash picked up by Martins or anything like that, you are being charged a tipping fee. The, if this was back to the original intent, there wouldn't have to be a tipping fee on anybody. So businesses, uh, such as, uh, well, Jonathan Myes wrote a letter, uh, in support of this legislation because his business is being charged double. The, the portion that goes for the, that, of the sales tax that is attributed to them and then they're paying a tipping fee. It's a two-layered system.
Do you know why the apportionment formula exists statewide? It exists because statewide, over eighty percent of sales tax proceeds are generated inside city limits.
A hundred percent of the sales tax here is generated inside the county of Atchison.
Okay.
Eighty percent of the EMS is used by the city of Atchison. Eighty percent of the, the voters.
Eighty percent of EMS.
Eighty percent of EMS, eighty percent of the sales tax collection, eighty percent of, uh.
We're not part of the, we're not.
You are.
County tax.
But the idea that you do use more because you're bigger is valid across all ar- areas. The collecting of the sales tax isn't the issue. It's a hundred percent collected in the county of Atchison. It's a county-wide sales tax.
So I, I, Jack, I didn't decide the apportionment formula when I was born, um, in the seventies, when they negotiated that settlement. They negotiated that agreement because in other service categories, I'll name Rome Bridge as one of those. If you live inside the city of Atchison, you pay more in property tax to contribute to the county's Rome Bridge department and you contribute to the city's public works department. Seven hundred thousand dollars a year is paid in property tax by properties that are inside the city of Atchison. And approximately zero dollars a year of Rome Bridge projects are delivered to the city of Atchison.
Okay, we're getting off the subject. Rome Bridge has nothing to do with this conversation?
I think it does. I mean, that's why that apportionment formula was agreed upon is because counties have the ability to withhold benefits from city jurisdictions. That's why that settlement, that's why that apportionment formula exists. If in nineteen ninety-three, a dedicated tax was desired, there is a path for that to have been pursued. It was not. It's not a dedicated tax. It is a general tax.
That's the reason it needs to be revoted and if, if the city chooses not to be part of the, uh, solid waste, that needs to be left out. I don't think that you ought to be collecting sales tax dollars in the name of, of solid waste and then not contributing.
A couple of things there. So joint communications, uh, is jointly governed and I think that's important, uh, and both organizations truly mutually beneficial.
Currently.
Yeah, currently is. I will say that, uh, if there were ever a desire to dissolve joint communications, the city would have no desire to participate in a county communications center. We would desire to do it ourselves, so, um, you, uh, you know, kind of talk that way.
I don't think that'd be the right thing for this, this area.
I don't think so either.
But I think it'd be right for you to contribute a fair share.
Okay, yeah.
The proportion amount of the joint communications, solid waste. Commissioner Quinn presented to you, the city commission in May, after, this was our second meeting of the year, a plan for the apportionment of this sales tax, which was absolutely so well thought out and so well presented, you guys treated her like dog meat. You, then you have the city manager yelling nine times, "We're done, we're done, we're done." And the city commission, who is there, her boss, sat there and watched that happen.
Who, who's yelling?
The city manager.
Seems to me like you might have been yelling there. Uh, my memory of, of Becky at that meeting was, she said, "We're, we're done" because we always wind up kind of at this, uh, the same juncture where there's just an impasse of.
So we got that recorded. We can look at it.
Okay, um, I guess we can do that. Lost my train of thought a bit. Where was I?
I can help the dispatcher.
Yeah, so joint communications, uh, is important because it's mutually beneficial and jointly governed. Uh, that's not the case for solid waste. You, you made it clear that you think the city controls the county's solid waste operation and that's not the case. There's a statutorily required advisory committee that has a few people that happen to work for the city of Atchison. Uh, sometimes you guys take their recommendations, sometimes you don't.
I'm not aware. We haven't taken their recommendation, but.
I just mean that it's advisory and you're free to do as you wish, whether or not, I mean, you could.
And you participated, right, Justin?
I, I am the appointed recycling representative, uh, on, on that advisory committee.
So anything that you guys have proposed to the city-county commission, have we ever rejected it?
There was an example in two thousand and eighteen that Stacy had given to me. Um, since I'm new to the solid waste board, I was reviewing.
What was the example?
Well, like, at one point, there was this, uh, there was like a recycling building type thing that was proposed and.
I thought it was just her office, like, her area possibly, but I.
Was it presented to us?
In the notes it was.
Yeah, but it was presented to the county.
I'll, I'll withdraw that point because it's immaterial to the larger conversation. Just say that you can do what you like. It's, it's not jointly governed. You pay a tipping fee when we bring a truck full of stuff. Artists break pays, brings a fee when they bring a truck full of stuff. Anybody who's a resident that brings their own stuff is under the minimum, so they don't pay anything over and above. If you want to, you know, change up how that, how that works, that's fine. I guess to, to circle back to the beginning of this, uh, I, I think it's clear that, um, two of you support SB eighty-seven and I suppose that's fine. We'll be there at the Capitol, uh, to, to advocate against it because.
There's, you realize there's no more, there's no more people gonna testify. It's already there in the Senate. There's no more testifying. So I don't know what you're gonna do there, but.
Yeah, well, I don't know what you're going to, I don't know what you're going to do when the tax goes away and you can't pass a sales tax to replace that, that revenue.
I think our voters will, will pay sales tax.
You do?
Yeah.
Then I guess we're gonna, I guess we're gonna find out, assuming SB eighty-seven actually gets through by.
I think that there's, there're gonna have to be education and part of that is, you know, we already have a dedicated sales tax in place and that is for the ball fields. The ball fields haven't had one iota of criticism about how they are funded. That is assigned, that money goes directly to them. There is no, we're gonna keep this amount or we're gonna create an arbitrary figure. And so I think when the public looks at that and realizes, hey, you know, it's, it's, wouldn't be an additional tax on the people. It would be replacing the one we have now with a dedicated sales tax. And to explain to them, look, this is gonna take care of all of the infighting out of, because of the apportionment formula, since that to, ha, we're getting about forty-eight percent of the sales tax. The cities get the, their shares of the other. I think the city is fifty?
You wind up with about seventy-something percent. You wind up in the seventies after our four hundred and forty-five thousand.
In the city of Effingham, the four cities of the third class each get a share according to the apportionment. But with, because we have no interlocal agreement or anything in place, there's nothing to compel any of them to hand over a dollar to us. They can keep that portion and they have kept large portion for many, many years. Uh, they keep going back to when this started, back in ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five. Now, there was indiscretions. That's been thirty years ago and now we're still having infighting now. I mean, we've.
Has either service, joint communications or solid waste ever not gotten the amount they requested and applied to it?
I don't know if they've.
I'll, I'll answer that question. The answer is no. Solid waste and joint communications have always been fully funded through the entire stretch of this discrepancy.
But even at the beginning of this, the city handed over their portion, correct? I mean, your, your intent at the beginning was not to be a funding mechanism for the city.
The reason that they did that, uh, in the early years is because the sales tax projections were such that it would take the contribution of every jurisdiction to fund those two services and very quickly they realized there is a lot of extra money here. And that's continued to be the problem over and over and over again. Our respective organizations have come to agreements to pay off jail bonds early or there's been a couple of creative ways to sort of mend fences for intermittent periods of time. And the problem now is that there is too much money, uh, to be able to actually preserve voter, there's too much money. Those two services don't take that much money to provide.
And we don't believe in the sovereign right of the voters because there's more money.
Well, when we.
All they do is pay for those two services. If there's extra money, there's extra money.
When there was, uh, these options were all discussed during the sales tax committee and the city always says, "No, no, no." They wanted, they want to be able to use that in their tax mix to take this extra money that they can keep and use it for their tax mix. But they don't want the county to have any more of that for their tax mix. So the, that's the reason they, I'll, I'll quote Joe Warren again, that they like the status quo. He's mentioned that a couple of times in a, a meeting earlier this year. And how do you keep status quo? You, you go up to the edge on an agreement and then you pull back at the last second. So it gets kicked down the road. It's another year. Uh, even when we decided to form the sales tax committee, that meeting happened in December of seventeen, I believe. And Becky Berger and I were to. And Becky Berger and I were to get together and set up a, a board. I went to her at that, right after that meeting was done and said something about, "Well, let's wait till after Christmas." Well, it's January I contacted her, and, "Oh, well, I, we can't do this ourselves. Now we're gonna have to have another special meeting to set up the committee." So it took six months to set up the sales tax committee because it was, in other words, things have just kept getting pushed further down the road. By the time we could have ever came up with a decision, it would have been another tax year would have been in the hopper because when budgets are due, uh, by August, you know, it, it's just, everything keeps pushed back. "We can't do it now. Uh, we'll do it later," and nothing ever gets done. And I think, um, Representative Epley's statement is quite evident. It is well-known that this is one of those issues that just will not be resolved without a ballot initiative, a forced negotiation, or discontinuance of this tax altogether. I mean, I think that's quite telling.
Any which way you wanna try and build a, a structure for an agreement, you know, we're opening that conversation. If it's what was discussed in April and May, um, if that's the insistence, I, I think there's a lot of similarities then. We're, we're willing to do that, but we wanna have the conversation about Rome Bridge funding following the same type of, type of arrangements. I know you think that they're different. They're, they're not?
Seems like townships take care of township roads, counties take care of county roads, state take care of state roads. Cities take care of city roads. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, that's another thing that's injected into this. Not only would this agreement be, um, pretty much status quo, except for the city would pay, uh, fifty percent of, of, uh, joint communications. Nothing new, or no new funding for, uh, solid waste. But then they would, uh, start, we would start paying them, uh, money out of the Road and Bridge Fund for their streets. And I don't know where that, if, if you're talking about solid, or solid waste and joint communication, where does this come in from?
Would you agree that people who pay should benefit?
The voters, the voter for, should, should, should get the services they voted for. I agree with that.
Do voters that vote for county commissioners expect that two county commission districts will get all of the Rome Bridge projects, and one of them will get zero?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Your district gets zero Rome Bridge project.
I don't, I don't think that's important.
Well, your district pays, yeah, the city of Atchison, which is not exactly your district, but it's close, pays seven hundred thousand dollars to that effect every year. It's a really big deal. So if the structure that's insisted upon is what was presented in April and May, we'll read that tomorrow, but we want the same math applied to Rome Bridge Fund. That would be the position of that. The reason that the joint communications split structure, uh, that you have the paper in front of you is compelling is because, uh, it collaborates around a service that is actually jointly governed, independently governed, uh, and is mutually beneficial to both organizations. Solid waste, uh, and there's, there's different people have different perspective. I'm, I'm here to try and give a little bit of, uh, singular, um, voice to the city's perspective. Solid waste is not jointly governed. Uh, it's not necessarily, I mean, it is, um, I guess beneficial to our residents to have a, a solid waste operation, but it's not mutually beneficial in the same way that our communications is. And so, uh, the, the thought process there is that we can build around something that, um, that makes a lot of sense, and it's a, it's a unique structure and a perspective that I hadn't heard before. Uh, it also provides, uh, an increase in, um, in what that, uh, contribution is from, from the city's, uh, apportionment formula. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not naive. I didn't come here thinking that we were going to, to, to bridge a gap. I, I wasn't, uh, unborn yesterday. Uh, these are authentic issues, and I'm not the first person to sit in my chair with this discrepancy, just like I'm not the first people to sit in your chairs that offer to, you know, a similar point of view. So, uh, I thought I owed it to, uh, to my organization to come in here, uh, directly from, you know, where you stood, and then, you know, the chips can fall where they may. Let's see.
I will, I'll congratulate you because you're the first person in five years I've been, six years I've been a county commissioner. And anybody from the city of Atchison's ever come talk to us. The first person who's ever done that. Thank you for doing that.
Does anybody else want to?
Did you guys have any questions or you wanted comments or?
The city, I'm still on the airport. The city managed the airport. I, I recently had my yard set on fire by my neighbors, and we had to wait for the Shannon volunteer fire department, which was fantastic. They responded, but some of the attitude we got was that it wasn't gonna be as good as city services. If anything happens at the airport, God forbid, would they still rely on our services or would city services go respond?
Because that's how the city responds.
Can they drive by the houses that would be waiting for the volunteer fire department?
I'd have to ask them, you know, I, my upbringing has not been in city management, has not been in public safety. It's been more in public works and projects and things like that. So I'd, I'd have to ask our, our, ask our fire chief, uh, to, to provide a little bit more context than that. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I'm gonna try to ask some questions that I have. I've communicated with some of, some of you. Um, so please, someone explain to me, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to clarify, what is the difference between a general sales tax that was passed in ninety-three and communication that you guys had was not dedicated?
Was it dedicated sales tax? It, the dedicated sales tax is approved by the legislature and spells out exactly what that is for. So like the ball fields, that money can only be spent on what is mentioned in that agreement. A general use, it was on the ballot what actually is to be used for, but it's not, it isn't, there's no interlocal agreement. There's no, there's no language saying that that is the one and only thing it can be used for.
Let me, let me give you another parallel. In nineteen eighties, the city of Atchison passed a one percent sales tax to pay for a fire truck, which they sold about five years ago for two thousand dollars. It was not a dedicated tax. That tax, after the fire truck was paid for, after the fire truck was salvaged, they're still collecting the tax.
I, I wanna also say the difference between the two is the general use sales tax is subject to the apportionment formula that we're talking about. So even though it's a county tax, we are only getting about forty-seven percent of that, and the rest is, goes to these, the municipalities. So, and then that's how they were supposed to hand it over, or the original agreement.
And that was broken down by what Casey presented in May, that we could turn out or whatever. Okay, got that. Um, and then someone brought up, I don't remember, I didn't put the name by, that there was an ordinance that, I believe in twenty fourteen, that removed, is that correct? That removed, like, from the city turning over everything. So, so please help me understand. So from nineteen ninety-three to.
So the, initially, there would have been a, a resolution or an ordinance in, in the early nineties that, uh, agreed to turn over one hundred percent of the apportioned funds back to the county for the purposes of running, uh, or for the purposes of, of joint communications and solid waste. Uh, at some point, I, I couldn't come up with the year. I'm not sure. Ninety-six, ninety-seven, whatever. Um, that was repealed. Um, and, you know, I, I don't wanna speculate as to the, I, I believe that their understanding at that point was that there was more money, uh, than was necessary to run those two services. And so for that interim period of time, um, the county was the, you know, the sole beneficiary of those excesses. Uh, and at, at that point, the city would have become wise to the, to the fact that this does go via an apportionment formula, but for our own resolution or ordinance, we're not legally bound to relay all of those funds. So that would have been repealed at that time. Ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-five, somewhere in there.
That's fine. And I get that. So these are just general questions, and I, and just so I can help understand this. So when the sales tax is collected, it goes to the state. The state sends it back to the record or respective entities, and then the entities, in theory, are supposed to turn it over to the county. But whatever year you're talking about, they, it started in the city because of these excesses and tensions start to happen. And I've heard the term of bloated solid waste budget as bloated communications and maybe not some audits, what have you. You know, I, I'm not on e- either side. I just wanna understand that you guys, you and the city started withholding some of the funds due to whatever reasoning. Um, so what does the city do with those excess funds that you guys report?
Yeah, so I can't speak to prior to twenty fourteen. Since twenty fourteen, there was a swap out that happened. Prior to twenty fourteen, there was a solid waste fee on the utility bill. That was about fifteen dollars a month. Fourteen, I think the last one, I remember, it was fourteen dollars ninety-three cents a month. Uh, what we did was, uh, at that time, we had a parallel combined sewer issue, and the difference doesn't really matter, but we switched things up. So now we don't have a solid waste charge on our utility bill. We use our apportionment, uh, of the sales tax funds for our solid waste and recycling operation. That's true since twenty fourteen.
Okay.
It is more difficult going forward for that to be true, again, because there's too much money.
Still coming in?
Yes.
So under then the general sales tax rules, if more money comes in than for joint communications and solid waste, what are the rules that you can use it for? Is that where an interlocal agreement comes together and you guys agree upon?
An interlocal agreement could govern that, but, uh, our understanding is that, um, that state law allow, it's a, it's a general use sales tax, and so.
You can use it for whatever.
From the city's perspective, yes, we could.
Technically, from a legal point of view.
That's our, that's our understanding. I, I won't speak for the county and their understanding of what their obligations would be to that effect. I, I don't know.
Okay. No, that, that answers that. And then I have been given two different answers from both sides as to, you had said that it could be reduced by unilaterally from the county commission, but then I heard from the other side that that can't happen without it going to the, to the vote. So I guess I need some clarification.
My recollection would be that the county commission has the ability to lower it by quarter cent increment.
Quarter cent. Yeah, we could, but again, if we would go to three-quarter cent, yes.
So just by a vote from you guys, you just.
County Council said we can't.
He's, he's said he's not sure.
Because I haven't emailed him with that.
I don't think that's. There is a statute.
It has to be voted.
That's always.
Anyway, I think we're getting way off the topic by discussing that, but, uh, the, the statute says that the, the amount is set by the board of county commissioners in increments of twenty-five, twenty-two, five percent or whatever. But that's, uh, talking about before, before it's voted. It's not talking about, uh, after the, after the fact. And there are virtually no court cases that discuss the issues, uh, that everything's attorney general opinions. And there may be any opinion that says that, but I'm not aware of it. Did you push the answer to?
I just got to, I got, from one side, it basically said that the county commissioners can lower it, and then the other side, no, it has to go through the voters, so I don't know.
That was my understanding.
You can't do that.
Okay. So I mean.
We could put a ballot question out there. You have the power to do that.
Well, I thought that that's what we could do, but I, I couldn't, I wouldn't do that because if we would lower it down to three-quarter cent, the, the, that don't mean that the cities are gonna pay as much as they are now, and there's just gonna be less money left over. They could just not, they could just say, "Oh, well, since you've lowered it a quarter percent, we're not gonna give you anything."
I, I will say that, um, sales tax capacity is something that is interesting to the city. We have other needs and infrastructure and such, and so, uh, our organization for a long time has, uh, maloperated under the assumption that, uh, we don't want to increase the sales tax levy. We don't want to increase the property tax levy, uh, operate within those constraints and do as much as you can. Uh, so sales tax capacity is something that's quite interesting to us, and so, uh, if there were willingness to negotiate, sort of a, a lesser levy, um, by whatever means that would, uh, look like, that is something that's really interesting to the city.
Jennifer, you mentioned two thousand fourteen. Is that, did you mention two thousand fourteen?
I believe that would have been when Justin was talking and said that, you know, twenty fourteen is when they started, correct me if I'm wrong, withholding, and that's when they started at about four hundred and fourteen thousand.
Well, actually, they started withholding around two thousand two. Uh, but in two thousand.
Then I have my notes wrong. I apologize.
So in two thousand fourteen, there was two, uh, I don't know what the city calls them, ordinances, that said that they would give the county four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the, and this was, of course, not unilateral. I mean, it was unilateral. There's no agreement. They didn't come to the county and say, "We need to make this agreement." They just did.
Is that when you were on the city?
It was. And I will tell you, as a city commissioner, the city management didn't divulge all the details of this to the city commission, and the bureaucrats held back the information. If I would have understood it better, and once I became a county commissioner, I started seeing the whole picture because the bureaucrats at the city management level kept that information.
Jack, that's a pretty serious allegation. You, you say that if Trey was sitting here?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, that's a allegation of pretty serious dishonesty.
I didn't speak, I says, I did not get all the information.
So one other question I have, um, so Eric had shared in an email correspondence that in eighteen nineteen, there was this sales tax committee, which I never heard of, which doesn't mean anything. And there was an agreement made, and it really wasn't clear as to what, that they said that the city interjected things on their side, and it didn't come to an agreement. Like, what were those things that then dissolved that agreement?
Yeah, and so what year would that have been?
Uh, that would have been nineteen, because, uh, I think that was shortly before I got this email. There was, okay, when we got done with the sales tax, our last meeting, it was, uh, former Mayor Rizza is the one that was leading the meeting and voiced basically the same, uh, thing that, uh, Casey had presented at the city county meeting. It was the same structure, same way that we would use the apportionment formula to rebate, uh, all of the excess. One of the big sticking points that up until that time had been, it was always assumed that all the entities would hand over their hundred percent of their check, and then at the end of the year, we would rebate them, uh, whatever, whatever it was. So the county was, yeah, the excess, so.
According to the apportionment formula?
Well, whatever we had agreed on, but, you know, the original thing was that they were handing over a hundred percent. And that for practical, uh, reasons, you know, that people, you know, we had big mounds of cash shedding there that was going the whole year when the cities could use that for, uh, cash flow, things like that. And that's something that Sean had came up with, and I thought, "That's a great idea." That's the reason that they, we would figure out the portion that was to be paid, and then when they, like, I think it was, uh, bi-monthly, they were gonna send in, uh, like eighty percent of those two months, if that's the, if that's what the figure was. And that way, they could keep the other for their cash flow, and at the end of the year, you know, they, they would, uh, end at the X amount of dollars that we'd decided upon. Well, then, and when I met with Sean, it was in Becky's office with her present. So I knew I had buy-in, or at least assumed we had buy-in from all, all people participating. Well, then, when the first agreement draft was presented, which the city's lawyer had done, there was a super committee that would be basically heavy with the, uh, on city, uh, influencer, city representation that would govern and control both programs. And I said, "Where did this come from? How do you get this? This was not even mentioned?" I mean, on the sales tax committee, we could talk about anything or bring up anything. This was never mentioned as a possibility or pros and cons. And, uh, they said, um, well, the word transparency was used, and they said, "Transparency equals control." In other words, to, for us to be transparent, we had to turn over control of both programs, which are, uh, staffed with county employees. There's county problems with having, uh, our employees not, not really governed by us. And the other thing, lost my train of thought. Um, there's two issues. Slipped my mind. The other, there was two major issues.
I think some with audits I got. Was there something with audits of those joint communications and solid waste?
No.
Maybe not. I don't.
I don't care. I, I wasn't in that room, and I, I can't speak to it. Eric has mentioned to me in the past that he thought that the, that what was presented to us in April or May, whenever that was, and what came out of that sales tax committee were roughly the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what I would say is that that arrangement, in my estimation, costs us half a million dollars a year, and that's not something we're going to voluntarily agree to over status quo.
Well, yeah, your predecessors have. Well, yeah, your predecessors had agreed to it, at least in part, because it went to
Like I said
Interlocal agreement.
But, I mean, they, obviously, they didn't agree to it because we don't have a deal. They may have, you know, I, I wasn't in that room, I can't, I, I can't speak to that. So I wasn't there, so that's the best that I can come up with.
And just so that I understand and everybody here, because I think we all kind of have some of these same similar questions, is just trying to understand. And the reason why you say that you would be out of half a million dollars is because it's in excess of what is needed for the budgets.
In excess of the four hundred and forty-five thousand that we contributed last year. Of, of the apportionment formula funds.
Right.
That's, that's not to make any mention of Timmy and Pete.
Okay.
A little bit into Jack's point earlier was that we're asking for fifty percent of both programs. But like joint communications is used predominantly by the city, so if you wanna go down that road, I believe that's eighty percent. So it's, they wouldn't be paying, I mean, that's still a deal on joint communications. If you wanted to go by call or pay by, by usage.
Okay, so I have been given a copy of this supposed interlocal agreement that's being talked about right now. And I think everybody, what I've gotten today, everybody agrees on the fifty-fifty for joint communications and solid waste is another issue. Is there any way that this can be broken up into two pieces where you guys agree on one piece of it, and then maybe work on the rest of it? So, it's just a, just a general question. If you agree, why couldn't the interlo, an agreement be made into two different pieces? Why does it have to be together? Or would both sides be open to, to voting that?
I can't think of an obstacle to that end.
At least talk about it.
Yeah, I, I can't think of an obstacle to it.
At this point, I think that
This is the one you guys did in Allen's house?
No, I haven't done anything in Allen's house. But that, oh, that's, that's part of it that was reviewed, but that's some of the stuff that's been mailed around, emailed around.
Please, you went to Allen's house. Connie and I went to Allen's house. Yes. You were aware of that, Chairman Bauer, that
Well, I'd be saying
That's the only way we can get people to listen or work with us is to try to do it. Because you don't allow it at our workshops, and
I don't allow
You've had
What have I had not allowed at the workshop?
People to come and speak.
This is, the workshop is a workshop. This is the place where they should speak.
That's what I'm just answering your question. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut your question off.
So that's just a question you guys don't have to answer, but I think we as residents would, you know,
You can answer.
At least see some sort of willingness to try to resolve this. I do, I'm gonna change directions on you because I wanna understand the whole road and bridge side of it, so just, I just So from the city's point of view, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there, we're, we're, number one, we're all county.
Correct.
And then we have city limits.
Yeah.
And there are roads that are used by everybody.
Yes.
And from the city's side of it, they would like to see the county divvy up some money for the roads that were within city limits, but it's still within the county as well.
Yes, I have worked for cities and counties where there was a method for sharing road and bridge funding from the county level. The, the only difference between the two issues is that there are a half a dozen to a dozen people that live in rural Ashson County that have been pounding their fists on the table for twenty years about how the sales tax formula is unfair. There are other reciprocated unfairnesses, and the most egregious one, and the only one that I'm as aware of, is the road and bridge thing. Because if you live in the city, you pay a full load of property taxes to the county, just like you do the city. There is a mechanism. Now, what some might say is that counties can't do work in cities without an interlocal agreement. That's true. But those interlocal agreements, you see why this is a parallel to the sales tax issue? The sales tax issue can be governed by an interlocal agreement, road and bridge funding can be governed by an interlocal agreement. So, I, I, again, I'm not naive. I know that the county's not going to agree to do that, and it's because they struggle to maintain the roads now with the budget that they've got, even taking seven hundred thousand dollars from the folks inside the city of Ashson and spending it on them. But the point is that they're not going to voluntarily do that because they don't have to. And the same thing is true of the sales tax thing. You're asking us to voluntarily give it up, and we don't have to. And so that's where the compromise and some negotiation comes in. In the past, there was a compromise that was struck to pay off jail bonds or with excess funds from the sales tax. That's an example of where people came together and they came to an agreement and a compromise to make the money work for everybody, so. Yes, there, there's, that perspective is certainly there. And again, I would repeat that the only difference, I'm speaking individually here, I don't think everybody from the city would necessarily say it in this way, the only difference is a twenty-year head start on banging your fist on the table about it.
I think that
I wish I knew who you were talking about.
Only seven or eight people banging their fists. I mean, this is a big deal in the rural, and Casey is as I remember you talking during your election about how many people in the rural say they are not shopping in Ashson because of their treatment of the sales tax. Do you remember saying that?
No, I say that, and it's the truth, but they all get their information but from one person. Like, they don't pay attention and educate themselves like they should, and that's what I've been trying so hard to get people to pay attention. What?
What person are you talking about?
I mean, come on, Jack. I think we all know what person. The person testifying gets Senate Bill eighty-seven. Did you test, like, did you see who interviewed, like?
Yeah, Joe Born testified.
Okay, well, then there you go.
Mike Scott testified.
They might have been that person.
I mean, I
No.
I think Jonathan My sent a, a, a letter to
Yeah, Jonathan My sent a letter. Is that perfect?
Okay, any more questions? Because I'm gonna recap what I just heard and kind of try to draw this to figure out where we're headed, because
I think I've got a question. Do you guys have any questions? No, but I do think a lot of people go out of town because of the city's attitude. And I've lived both. You've only lived city. I've lived both, and I own in both. And I'll just say one thing, so part of the reason why I'm here is, you know, anytime you hear your property taxes may go up, you know, that is the thing, so, so I will you know, Justin brought this up, so if this passes, and I have a copy of the Senate bill, it's gonna sunset potentially no later than June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, what is the county's plan if it does pass? We would like to know that as well, as taxpayers, because, and I'm sure there's a lot of farmers, and I talked to you about that, Eric, there's a lot of farmers, and we don't quite have the numbers yet, I know we're waiting on them, is what is going to be the impact on agriculture, whether it be tillable, pasture land, or, or timber, you know, what's gonna be the impact? Because I have a lot of farmers that are clients, and that is one thing, when we do financial plans, they talk about the taxes, so if they're gonna be a huge impact, I think biggest thing I just have told everybody is you guys better educate yourself and get involved so that you understand both sides. I'm not here to say yay, nay, whatever. I will say it is, for lack of better words, disheartening. And this is on all levels, whether it be national, state, or whatever, that when we've lost our ability to come to the table to negotiate for the common good of citizens, what do we have left?
This, this conversation's to go on, Jennifer, I don't know.
Oh, I understand, but you can't give up, and it still has to keep going.
But the county's intent, that sales tax had to be replaced, would be replaced with a dedicated sales tax.
Then let's get a plan going, if that's your choice.
That's, that's where
Instead of just being around bullish. I don't know what to do. It is
I, I'm, I put my heart into it, and with a sales tax committee, and you know, you come away with that with of course, we had three representatives from the county, and three, three from the county, three from the city. And after we met over eighteen months to come up with a six to zero recommendation for, for how to do it, like, again, it was similar to what Casey presented at our last city-county meeting. And then for that to be all of a sudden the change-up at the last second, it's very disheartening. So I can't, I mean, we could pick up from that point, but, you know, we, we had submitted a rebuttal to the first draft. The county would send a draft, and it was rejected immediately. It didn't have those provisions that the city had injected into it. And it was pretty much exactly what, what was proposed earlier this year.
Would you say the people in the sales tax committee probably know it better than anyone? Like the
Yeah, they loved it for eighteen months, actually, they did.
Yeah, and who was on the sales tax committee?
The county was Steve Kapler, Kirk Wollgemuth, Jay Armstrong, and the city representatives was Mike Zizzulo, Jeff Shealy, and Mike Stack. And they were, I mean, we had extremely frank discussions, because we had, of course, it all gets drug back to ninety-three when things started and had to
When the voters voted or something.
Yeah, but, but all of the, had to be drug through the naught hole again, and, but it was, you know, I admitted what things that had been done wrong, but that was, you know, this is talking about thirty years ago. But whenever the subject comes up, immediately it goes back to there, and we have to go through the whole sword details. And, like I said
So you get the edge of the cliff, right?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Lynn is gonna make one more comment, and, and everybody, each side can point fingers at each other and bring up the past and bring up the history, but unless you guys get something resolved on both sides, the biggest losers are gonna be us citizens, either way.
Absolutely.
And, and that's who the biggest losers, and you guys are included in those citizens, and so we hope you can get something done.
That's, I, I'm hoping to use the, the ball field example. I mean, everybody has seen them and heard, you know, that past, it's a dedicated sales tax. And there hasn't been any controversy over that, because
That's gonna sunset.
That one will sunset, yes.
That will, that will sunset, and then at what point in time, because I worked at the bank during that, and then who's gonna cover that maintenance?
But, but that, well
The maintenance fund being gathered.
But that goes away at some point in time.
There's a
But those
Fund there, and it's, it's gonna be dedicated and help all bills are paid.
But it's not in perpetuity that goes on forever.
I don't know how long the bills will take to pay.
I think
That would be, it's, it's really bad policy to have any sort of in perpetuity sales tax. This problem would have been solved for us at some point, because we had no choice, because sun, there's a reason that sunsets are so common.
That's why you're still collecting money for a fire truck.
So are you saying that this one ought to censor it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would say, yes. We, we're fine. As I told you, like, there are about six different ways that I could come up with something that's agreeable to the city, including sunsetting the sales tax. The problem with SB eighty-seven is not in the sunsetting of the sales tax, although that is a, a separate problem. We would not do that to other cities throughout the state. There's a reason, again, that the apportionment formula is the way that it is, and it was a truce between cities and counties. And there's a reason that the legislature is the only body that has the ability to allow for a dedicated sales tax. What SB eighty-seven does is a drastic change to that decade-old
I believe, though, that the way that wording is there, that anyone that has an interlocal agreement, it doesn't change their, their sales tax at all. Because there is an existing agreement. What sets us apart is we're one of the very few places that has a general use sales tax with no agreement. That was, it was broken before the first sales tax dollar was ever collected. It was broken because it was never basically ratified and set down to what needed, it needed to be spent on. So it was broken, that's the reason the county messed up, the city's messed up. We've tried to remove barriers as to, you know, the, like I say, the goal posts keep moving. One time, it was like, well, you took some money out for, for your general in the budget, in your general ledger, or gen, just for the county general, you put some in. So we stopped, we made sure we didn't do that anymore. Then it became transparency. You can't, we're not getting the reports. So when that kind of cleared up, it was another problem. And now it's like they don't want sales tax altogether. There's always something that, or they don't want solid waste.
You can come six different, six different ways, but in a negotiation, it's not, well, this is what we want. And then you don't ask, okay, well, what do you want to be able to agree to that? In a negotiation, there's
Like the sales tax committee, and when we had six to zero, and then the city changed it and then honored it, so
I very much wish that I was in that room, Eric, to be part of that conversation. I was not. I was across the hall, working on other stuff.
You've got three representatives that are still in the city. Have you talked to them of what went on in that room?
They were in the room?
Yes, when they, they voted on that
They weren't in the room with Becky, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they put something else in, but what, they know what they voted on and recommended, and they should, I mean, why wouldn't they tell you what, what was the proposal and what was new that was added to that?
Because in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, I was across the hall working on a grant to take out the pedestrian wall. I don't know, like, I mean, this is, I have a long, we have a long list of stuff that we're involved and I don't mean to make that sound like it's not important, I'm just saying that I was across the hall working on other stuff. I
But you could find that out, and then we could pick it up from there.
We don't have cameras in our offices. I can't go watch a recording of what Becky told you in twenty eighteen. I can't do that.
Don't go according to what Becky said. Let's pick up that, what the sales tax committee passed and start the, start it from there.
Casey presented.
Yeah, same thing Casey presented.
So I'll trust you and, and you saying that it's the same thing that happened in April or May, and what I'll tell you is that my understanding is that that's a net loss to us over the status quo, although big, and our commission's not going to agree to that.
See, you can see that, that's
Revoting is probably the right way to go.
So do what?
Revoting is probably the right way to go.
I mean, that's what you wanna do. I, again, I, we're members of the leading Kansas municipalities. We believe in the apportionment formula for a lot of reasons. And I know you guys are members of the Kansas State Association of Counties, and they view this very differently. They view it as an opportunity.
They support.
I, I'm aware, I'm aware of that, and I know why they support it, but I don't advocate, I, I'm not here telling you that you're stupid or wrong for advocating for what you believe in, Eric. We had this conversation at one point. You're advocating for what you think is in the best interest of your constituents. Please just know that I'm doing the same thing.
Judge?
Justin.
Justin, you and I have had lots of conversations over the years. I don't know if I've ever discussed sales tax with you. It's possible we have. What?
Probably not.
Probably not, so.
Well, until, until very recently, you know, I'm not sitting in this chair, and quite frankly, I'm not gonna sit in this chair for very long.
I understand.
Because I have other, other things that I'm planning to pursue, but for the time being, you know, I wanted to
So anytime you wanna have a conversation with me, more to happen.
So I just kinda wanna recap, because this meeting and, and being open for the public to witness and hear
It's a public meeting.
Did you have something else to say?
No, it's a public meeting.
All I'm trying to say is, like, this is a perfect example of what I've been living the past few months and why we can't get anywhere. I mean, the words that said politics, personalities, we can't fix it, like, we've accepted that mindset, and there's no cooperation. So from that, for constituents, because people, you can try to educate people, this is what I found for the past eleven months. People don't pay attention, people don't care until it affects them. So let's talk about what is going to affect them. When we lose our countywide sales tax, let's just say Senate bill passes and they sunset our tax, how are we, as the three of us commissioners, and I'm leaning on you two, because you're, you have many more years at this, going to absorb joint communications and solid waste budgets, which are over two million dollars for next year? I'm using twenty twenty-two. We're gonna have to start budgeting this in twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-three, because that's when
First of all, it's twenty twenty-three.
Well, no, no, it's not.
No, it's gonna be added, years be added to it.
Well, that's
Just so you're not
Well, you mean the, the current, the one that was proposed last year said twenty twenty-three, but since it didn't pass last year.
Okay, well
That's at least what I told him, I got him.
Okay.
Well, we might have been getting conflicting information. Regardless, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, how are we going to fund those services?
Try to get a dedicated sales tax.
Try. What if we fail?
A lot of forgotten waste to fund.
How would that?
Well, it may be more charges on solid waste. It might have to be a, a charge on the city of Ashson for using joint communications.
So we're, we're gonna charge the city of Ashson and a charge at solid waste to, to bring two million dollars into our
Yeah, why not?
Does that sound right? We're gonna generate two million dollars by putting fees at solid waste and charging the city
Well, it's not two million dollars. It's a million and eight right now we're doing for joint communications. It's a million and eight right now, we're doing for joint communications and so on.
Well, actually, if, well, let me just calculate, it's one million, one forty-four, eight sixty-five next year for joint communications, plus nine hundred and five, two thirty-five, which is, sorry, sorry, two million, fifty thousand, one hundred. So that's what we're talking about, how are we going to incur that without this countywide sales tax?
I think it's public policy that we have to discuss.
Well, so-
I don't know if today's the day we're going to discuss public policy.
Well, this is a perfect day, because we're talking about repercussions of losing the countywide sales tax. Why wouldn't we give people, and that's obviously where we're headed, so we need to let people know what they can expect.
Remember we talked about having patience on things, that, let's, let's wait till we have to deal with it.
Okay, so just all of a sudden wait until you generate property tax statements? You guys are all coming to my office that day, that's all I'm citing. If that, if that happens, you all are in my office the day the tax statements go out. I mean, maybe I'm asking the wrong people, sorry, I should be asking the county treasurer and the county clerk. How are we going to pay for these services?
I don't think you must special assessment like we did in thirteen or fourteen.
So what are our options?
Free some levy, and I don't think there's other-
Someone is going to have to pay that uses the, uh, joint communications. People will have to pay for it, they use it.
Unless they do their own.
I don't think they could do their own.
Why not?
I think it'd be completely foolish on their part.
They could be completely foolish to dissolve joint communications.
Right.
You said what?
I think it would be completely foolish to dissolve joint communications.
Absolutely, that we agree on. That we agree on. I guess you guys could start taking your trash to another county if you wanted to, so you could have to pay the tip, but we'll have to raise it then.
Yeah, the juice comes from somewhere.
Yeah.
So we're talking about levy, you have to increase it, what's your answer?
It's definitely, it would definitely affect the levy. It may not be a two million dollar effect on the levy, but it will definitely affect the levy.
So that's why you do the sales tax, people have a choice, do I want to pay it this way, or do I want to pay it with sales tax?
And so we can just, as county commissioners, we can put us a countywide sales tax question on the ballot, just us three, without authority, with no one standing in our way.
I think to make it dedicated, we do permission, Ashson County.
I think that has to be ran through the-
Yes, with you.
And, and there isn't anything that could stop us from doing that?
Not to my knowledge.
But the question, oh, no, I don't think so, I don't think so.
But to make it, I would want to make it dedicated, if that was the case.
I think it needs to be dedicated, because that's the only way we're going to remove that, the problem with the excess being, I mean, everybody's got their hand out for the excess.
So, based on the timeline, then, if we know, say, April, if Senate bill passes?
Well, with both of us, next year.
Right, and so then we would be able to get a countywide question on prior to the funding to stop?
Yes, because that would be, and if, if you're right, that would be two thousand and twenty-four, so even if the first one failed, we would have a second shot, and we could pass a, we'd have a second one, on two thousand and twenty-three, we could have another, uh, shot at passing. Because that wouldn't happen until, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-
That any excesses is split with the governments within the county on an apportionment basis.
Yeah, that was something that was brought up in these papers here, that you and I want to keep all of it, and we have never said we want to keep all of it.
No, I think that once we pay for those services, you know, all the excess should be apportioned accordingly.
Yes.
With the stint of this, with the other governments.
Important thing for people to know is, we, we don't want one hundred percent of that. Anything that's in excess, if it generates more, that gets rebated across the board. So I've said, I said I'd set on an agreement now, that, a pre-agreement, if we could, to let that be known, for anybody that's, um, interested, thinking that we are going to keep a hundred percent of it for ourselves, not interested in that at all.
So is our plan to put a new ballot question with solid waste and joint communications? Because I'm just trying to understand here, what-
If there was other things, Casey, I think we have to discuss that.
Okay, I'm just wondering, when the joint funding for joint communications goes away, what does that look like for, for the citizens? Because we've heard at this table today, there's a possibility of another dispatch center, or if the county is going to run a dispatch center, you know, and charge to the city, that might not be a viable option, and at the end of the day, I'm just thinking of the people.
These are the options instead of a sales tax. The, the, the best tax books would be a sales tax.
Okay, and you said last Tuesday that you didn't want to lose our current sales tax.
That was me.
No.
I don't, I don't want to lose this.
You said it the week before, and he said it last week.
I said it, I, yeah, but-
I do not want to lose the sales tax.
I don't either.
But I want to make sure that all governments get to use it excess equally. And right now, it's not equal.
Yeah.
I agree with that. I agree a hundred percent that the excess should be shared equally, and that's where the rub is, this whole conversation.
Well, and I guess that's just my fear, is all these rubs, and then eventually, we might not agree, and we might do our thing, but it's every, everyone else that's going to pick up the bill.
And I know you have a tendency to look for doomsday scenarios, and, and I understand that, I mean, you, you, no, I'm not, I'm not putting you down, Casey.
I don't want to get a property tax statement this year saying a hundred and twenty-seven-
I don't start with the worst-case scenario, I like to start with a better case.
Yeah, but you're a strategic planning guy, you should be on board to say, you know, these people-
What's the steps, what's the plan then?
Yeah.
What are the options?
Those, you would with the sales tax.
Yeah, what are the options and, and the timetable?
Right, we got to have options and a timetable.
What are they?
Yeah, well, right now, the paper's solid waste and joint communications. The balance would go to, the excess would go to the other municipalities. Or we could add something else to the ballot question besides, uh, solid waste and joint-
Maybe, maybe the ballot question won't even be about a one cent, maybe we're talking about a half-cent, uh, joint communications only.
But if we do that, then the city loses six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they're going to have to raise their tax levy. So it's, you've got to make sure you're doing it so it all works for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, the city's got six hundred thousand dollars, if they have to portion it by a property tax, then they got the same problem.
Yeah.
So there again, the citizens get the benefit, no matter what.
Jennifer, the thing is, we're not going to decide this today.
Oh, I know you're not, but you have to start and have time to get something on the ballot.
And we've been discussing this every week for-
A long time. And the discussions have been just like today, it's like, we don't-
Have a plan.
Okay.
And I've-
Anybody else have a question?
... sales tax since before you were born.
Hey, Dolores, you could say things like that, so can I.
Yeah, and, and thank Casey, the sales tax committee lasted longer than you've been a commissioner, so that was eighteen months of dealing with that, so.
Well, I'm just looking at, like, my thing is, I'm coming into this, excuse my language, shit show, and I'm at the end. And so, I just need to prepare my constituents and the public for what they're going to pick up when we fail to cooperate and-
I think you're preparing somebody for something that has to prepare them.
We can, we can figure out a solution, okay?
Well-
From my lips, the gods are-
Okay.
Uh, Patrick, County Councilor update.
I don't have a word, I'm going to get-
What?
I don't have anything, okay.
Well, I see what people are moving to the county.
We've dealt a lot of them already.
Oh, goodness gracious.
Okay, any need for executive sessions? Okay, this is for public comment, anybody have public comment, either online or in person? Seeing never, seeing none, I would make a, uh, entertain a, a motion to adjourn at three oh three P M.
So?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.